All the, oh, sorry.
You're good.
Okay. I'd like to call it Village Council Special Meeting Thursday, May 6th at 11:02 a.m. to order.
Hello?
Um, hang on one second. Uh, first up, we, um, need to determine the quorum. We have everyone that's here and present. We've got, uh, Mr. Mayor on WebEx, Mr. Markley's in on the phone, and everyone else here in person.
I can hear you. Yep.
I need a motion to allow Bob and Joe to participate remotely.
So moved.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right. Next up is adoption of the agenda. Is there anything we would like to remove from this? Because we can't add anything. Nope.
I don't know.
Austin, if you could do a favor and shoot me, if you can, the agenda, because I did not see it on.
That, the email I sent with the WebEx instructions, you click on there was an agenda button?
I could also just pull it out.
Okay.
Like screenshot.
Hope I don't lose you, but I may go away for.
Hang on. Just stay here, Bob. I mean, Joe. Jesus. He looks just like Bob, too. Look at him.
Cat's over here.
He needs to grow a beard.
I know. He does need to grow a beard. All right. So no changes to the agenda? There you go, Joe. Can you see it?
No, not yet.
Oh, wait, hang on.
You know.
There.
Boom.
Can you see it, Joe?
You know what? I, I gotta get to my, uh, trying to, all of a sudden, you guys went, all went away. I don't know how to get back to a video.
Oh.
Huh?
Because Rohit's sharing the agenda. If you.
Yes, yes.
I understand. I'm, I'm, I think what I did, whatever I did, I, I, you guys just all went away, but I'm trying to find you.
Click the little camera icon, Joe.
Uh, there, it doesn't have it there, so.
Oh, okay. Let me redo it.
But I'm.
No, it's not us. It's him. He, like, clicked off on the WebEx.
Yeah, it's only me. So I, here's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna just, I'm gonna log out and log right back in, so.
Okay. We'll wait. That's not the right agenda.
Oh, it's not?
Nope. That's for next Tuesday.
Yeah, that's for Tuesday.
True, true. Okay.
That's all right. We got time. He's coming back.
Yep.
We hear you, Derek.
Oh. Derek, are you calling user number three?
He is.
He just didn't want to say anything earlier?
He was trying to. He couldn't get it.
Rude.
Here we go. Oh, but I should probably also have the agenda opened up in my.
That's still not the right agenda.
Wait, that's not the right agenda?
No.
No, it's revised agenda.
No, that's, that's.
That's not the.
That's the, we revised it. There's one that says revised.
Okay, okay. Sorry, sorry. Here it is.
It's fine.
Third time's a
There we go. That's it. I was like, there's a lot more than that on there. Is Joe back?
No, I, I'm, I'm still struggling here. Whatever. Right. Give me, I'm trying to get out of everything here, so. By the way, here's a camera. Why isn't he on? It's not on the zoom, is it?
No, it's WebEx.
Damn, we spent, we spent the first 30 minutes of everything just doing, I'm so sick of.
F you around.
Well.
Just, just go ahead and start. I'll catch up.
All right. So no changes to the agenda, so I need a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, number four, discuss and consider approval of lawn maintenance contract. Derek, or calling user number three?
I'm giving you pa.
Yeah, but you gotta talk a little bit louder.
Handout, handout.
You could raise your hands. That could work, too.
Handout.
Handout.
All right.
All right. I have taken our current landscaping contract, and I have compared it to two different proposals. As you can see in the memo, currently we are scheduled for 36 tucks a year at Town Hall and 18 tucks a year for the Roundabout. Um, I think there's a lot of sentiment that the Roundabout needs more attention, and Town Hall really doesn't need as much. Um, and so I've asked two other companies to work an increase in the frequency of visits to both facilities, especially the Roundabout, and those that listed there. Um, I like the contract proposals with, uh, Grass Chopper. Uh, they do local good work. I actually found them because of their maintenance.
Bob, can you meet yourself?
Yeah.
Sorry, Derek. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I actually found them because of their maintenance of the reserves in the woods, right down on Newtown Road. They do an amazing job maintaining that. So we don't currently have the money budgeted to afford, you know, a larger contract, but I think there's options there to either move some money or make a change at the fiscal year with, uh, reallocation. Um, but I wanted to review that, these options to discuss, and see which direction you want to move in. I, I have talked to our current landscaper about bumping the service. He agrees that the Roundabout do need a lot of TLC. Um, he's actually gonna bring his whole crew out there tomorrow and do some extended manual labor to address some of the issues, uh, to try to get ahead of it. I also have a meeting scheduled with the landscaping company that built the Roundabout, um, both the rep that I dealt with and his supervisor, uh, Monday morning to discuss the conditions of the plant, uh, potential replacement of plant, uh, what they're willing to fund, what they would ask from us, like, versus. So I would probably invite Councilman Wortman to that meeting if he would like to attend. Um, you know, another person to not exceed a quorum, uh, maybe a rep from PRC. But I think as many voices as we can have, have a team on them to make sure we're getting our money's worth out of that as well. So a lot of moving parts here. Um, but I know that this was something you guys wanted me to address, so I'm bringing it forward.
Derek, the meeting that you're gonna have on Monday, um, and I know you guys went out and looked at the Roundabout this past Tuesday, was anything dead?
Yes. The trees in the middle, they're in burn.
Okay.
And the, and the landscapers up front are not doing the best. Um, I, they are showing some, some growth, but my recent conversation with the landscaper was, we kinda shot ourselves in the bush with picking those in the time of year that they went in. Um, again, I know everybody has their own opinion on what plants should be gone in and, you know, whether we did the right thing or not, but that's why I really wanted to have them come back out and assess the health of them and make a, you know, a, a plan of attack for moving forward. Do we stick with those? Do we, uh, change them out? Do we add some evergreen in the front to maybe hide them a little bit? Um.
Okay. What time is that meeting on Monday morning?
Eight thirty.
Jeez, really?
Yeah, you have to get up in the morning, can't you?
God.
Derek, is it watering? Has anybody been watering these things over the, since they've been put in?
No. No.
No.
We don't, we don't have the capacity to do so. And I think, Derek, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's why we selected some of the vegetation that we did, because it was drought resistance in a way.
Still, you gotta, you gotta water it to start with to get them going, especially those trees. It doesn't surprise me the trees died if they didn't get watered.
I thought we, I thought they were gonna water them, like, from a truck. We were never gonna do that.
Not, not us. We can't hire them to do that, uh, but I didn't think with all the rain that we got this winter, we needed it.
It was, well, I think the damage was done when they, when they were first planted before we got all that. Um, they take a lot of water to set to start with, and then the amount of water we got over the winter should've sustained them, but they, they probably had the damage done early on.
Okay.
Especially those trees, because they're, they're on top of the hill, so the water all runs away from them.
Runs downhill. Okay. I, I'll, I'll come out Monday morning if you want me to, Derek.
All right. And I'll be there. I'll be asleep.
Sure. The, um, and that's something we can address with them in, is solidifying a watering plan.
Okay. So Derek, you like this grass chopper the best?
I do, uh, just because I, I've seen his work, and, uh, spoke with him personally, and, um, basically his words to me are, if the Roundabout need attention, then we're gonna be there giving them attention. He's not lapped into a schedule of, uh, I'm only gonna tell him, you know, once a week or once every two weeks. He's, he's gonna tell them as quickly as they, as they need.
How, how will he?
And, and they're unbriefly.
How will he know that? Do we have to call them, or are they just gonna spot check them? How does that work?
He's working in the area, uh, three, four days a week.
Okay. So he just drives by and sees it?
Yeah.
Okay. And when we're talking about the traffic circle maintenance, are we strictly talking landscape? Are we talking, like, picking up trash, like, that happens to be, like, on the apron?
Yeah, no, it's, it's quoted in there that it is a maintenance of trash, blowing, even it needs, and working clean. Um, it's in that contract.
Okay. So it's about a thousand dollars more than what we were currently paying?
Well, no, it's, um, about $3,000 more than what we're currently paying. If, if you upped the coverage of the current contract and then compare apple to apple, it would be about a thousand dollars more.
Okay. Well, either way, we need to increase it, because, I mean, everything looks like poo, and we need to up it.
I, I agree. I think when the Roundabout were closed, um, you know, we were already in the current contract, and it was just a ballpark estimate of what might be needed.
Okay. I mean, I, I mean, I'm good with going with who, who you like the best.
Yeah. I mean, you, you've got the experience with these guys. As long as they're doing a good job, I don't care who does it, really, but.
Me, too. Do we have a, like, what's the teeth of it if they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing?
So I need to iron that out. Um, we're paying them in monthly payments, and I, I think we just, um, cancel the contract.
Okay. And do we have, like, a time, timeline to cancel?
I don't think you've got the contract language in there yet, do you, Derek?
Okay. I didn't know. I'm trying to go through this, so I didn't know. This looks like the contract here, but.
I think, I think if, if, what we probably ought to do, rather than just, um, holding cancellation over their head, um, because we have to go back and find another contractor, I think there should be, um, just like the trash, should be a monetary penalty if they're not doing it, which would, you know, it would give them an incentive to do it right without us having to change contractors, uh, you know, if they aren't doing it right.
So Derek, whenever, if, if they authorize grass choppers, I think that's the name of it?
Grass chopper.
To, to proceed, then what we can do is, in the review process with the attorney, we can get him to add some language in there about a monetary penalty into the contract.
Would it be okay to, would it be okay to potentially do a trial three-month period to see how they're performing, and then go into the contract?
I think we have to have a contract in order to give somebody money, don't we? Per, like.
We don't have to have a contract, but I wouldn't, I mean, we can ask Derek to call him and ask him that, but we can always cancel it if.
But I was gonna say, if we have a contract, like, we probably have, like, a, it's probably a month-to-month contract where we just cancel if we're not happy with it.
Yeah.
I, I don't think we need to make it too.
Yeah.
No, too, too complicated.
Complicated.
Okay. All right. So I'm gonna make a motion to award Grass Chopper landscape and maintenance contract not to exceed $10,000 per year and authorize future budget amendment to move funds from Community Gardens.
So moved.
Pending attorney review and village manager review.
Do you so move that?
Andy so moved that.
Yeah.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you very much. Thanks.
You remember Dave's talking?
Thanks, thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Derek.
Thanks, calling user number three. All right. Next up is.
What is the concrete?
What, Derek?
You are the project, if you're possible?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the, the sooner we can get it looking better and back up to snuff, the better.
And, uh, just, just to be clear, this is going to eliminate the need for potential street sweeping?
You mean, you and Andy?
I don't, I don't know that, I don't know that that necessarily, because they'll pick up the debris and stuff, but all that gravel and all that, I don't know if that would be covered. Would it be, Derek?
I, I would probably need to verify that before I say yes or no.
Yeah.
Well, the only, the only thing I would comment is if you stayed on top of it, like, if they were doing weekly service or whatever, I don't think it becomes an issue, but if we let it go a year, you're gonna have some problems. But I think in that, just to be clear, we, we want them picking up debris and everything that Andy and I found. It would be nice if it was just blown off and stuff, but it gets tricky, because they have to time it based on, uh, when traffic is not, otherwise they'll have to have some sort of, uh, traffic calling person in there.
I'll do it. I'll put on a vest and call the traffic.
So just, um, real quick, though, should we consider a one-time sweeper to go out there and actually sweep the circles of, because there's an immense, as you know, Joe, there's an immense amount of debris out there. Should we do it one time before they take over so that they can just then maintain it from there? I mean, there, the, because the Waxahomarvin circle is worse than the Marvin Road circle.
I, I would agree, and I, and you gotta keep in mind, that's been over a year, that that, we have not had done anything, so I think it's, that makes sense, and then they start cleaning.
Yeah. I think that would make sense. I don't think it's, I mean, a one-time deal, I don't think would be that expensive.
All right.
Okay. So y'all want us to look at getting a street sweeper to do it before they start?
No, I would do it after they're done, because they're gonna debris it up again with, like, schmutz and stuff.
Well, no, I mean, like, before they start their contract, and then they can maintain it from a clean start.
Yes, but if they're gonna go in and replace stuff and add mulch and do that kinda stuff, I would rather them do all of that and then have the street sweeper clean it, and then they can maintain it after that.
All right. That's fine. I mean.
Right?
Yeah.
You're gonna get schmutz and stuff.
Um, just so, just so everyone's aware, per our purchasing policy, if this amount exceeds, Derek, correct me if I'm wrong, is it 1,500?
It is.
Um, we have to get three quotes, so it will complicate things a little bit to.
Can we work on that? We need to, I think we need to, really, I think we need to, uh, revisit our purchasing policy.
We can, yeah.
And as cumbersome and hand-tying that it is, um, for you guys to get stuff done. Can we, can we do that?
We can. It's actually on our list to do. Um, but until that policy is changed, we have to adhere to it unless y'all.
Can we waive it?
Unless y'all authorize a waiver now to get one quote for a street sweeper, and we'll bring it back. Or we can go ahead and add it in.
I'm gonna need a motion to waive the purchasing policy threshold of $1,500 and three quotes for the streets, one-time street sweeper work.
So moved.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Okay, good?
Yeah. I hope it's not more than $1,500 to get it swept one time, but, you know.
But if it's, like, $2,000, then we gotta get three quotes. I mean, our purchasing policy is low key, so.
And we'll have to add that into the budget amendment with the.
That's fine.
Community Gardens.
Okay. All right. Derek, anything else?
No, that's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Derek.
Oh, hey, Derek, we met somebody really nice. She's gonna be either calling or emailing you about bamboo at the park.
I heard. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm gonna do it.
All right. Thanks, Derek. Okay. Uh, next up is number five, discuss and consider authorization of Randolph &amp; Sons to begin grading the Village Hall site. Christina.
So I was having computer issues this morning, so I'm gonna be reading some from my phone, but also Councilman Wortman is here. He can kind of reiterate some things if there's questions. But long story short, uh, let's rewind. About two weeks ago, we received a denial letter on our permits based off of, um, water and sewer not being approved for some reasons due to flow issues, and that we would have to have a additional approval from the state. Also Rohit, you can jump in if I say anything out of line. Um, we were gonna have to receive an additional approval from the state because our change of flow prompted an additional permit aside from the one that we received in 2017. So basically, what happened was the permits were being held up, like I said, in water and sewer. We had some conversation with their assistant county manager, Brian Matthews, and, um, our civil engineer, I can't remember who else was on the phone, uh, basically trying to figure out what was going on, and they advised us of this change of flow and that, the, the process that was gonna have to, to, um, take place after the fact, which basically held us up from getting water and sewer approval, I don't know, a couple months from now. And we cannot begin construction on the Village Hall site until the water and sewer permit has been approved. However, the zoning jurisdiction, i.e. the Village of Marvin, can go ahead and authorize the authority to begin grading. The county does not issue grading permits. That, that would be DEQ permit if we were over an acre of land disturbance, and since we're not, it would be up to us if we wanted to allow grading to start or not. Zoning permits have been approved. Um, building permits are still in the review process, but they look like they're, uh, pretty clean and nothing, nothing issued, no issues will, will transpire with those that we envisioned. As of last Friday, after our meeting with the county, our engineers went back to the drawing board to look at the flow, and they were actually able to reduce it to the amount that was below the 2017 permit. So those plans were actually subsequently resubmitted with a lower flow, which we think is gonna speed up the process much greater than, um, than we were currently on the trajectory to do. And that being said, the contractor's ready to start with the grading in hopes that we get the permits here pretty shortly. We feel like we're gonna get them fast, because we're at that 2017 level, and we've already been permitted in the past for that same level. And, um, just wanna say, there is, there are a few risks associated with beginning the grading work, i.e. if the permits aren't approved for whatever reason, whatever amount that we put into the grading has to change. We would have to go back and redo all of that. We do not anticipate that happening. Our civil engineer, um, gave some commentary at the, the meeting and said that he doesn't anticipate that happening. Both Rohit and Andy were in the, the meeting, and I'll just kinda open the door for y'all to have any commentary, but what I'm asking for is, do y'all want us to go ahead and allow the contractor to start the grading at the risk of the permits not getting approved or changed?
Is there, is there a monetary penalty? Like, is the county gonna come in and give us a fine for doing it?
No.
Not a penalty.
So.
It would be reworking if there was any.
So, so they, so they grade something, and it, and I don't know grading terms, so I'm gonna use my terms. So they grade something, and it's too high, then they say you have to go in and do it a half an inch lower?
Well, that's not exactly it, but let me ask this one question first, and then I'll explain. So are we out of sketch phase? Did that get approved?
Not, as of today, not yet.
Not, not yet? Really?
I, I have not had time to, I literally just got back in the office this morning, so I have not checked, but we have not received a letter that said we were.
Okay. So basically, the risk is, is quite nominal in this case. DOT has approved the driveway, pretty much. Okay? So we're gonna have to move the driveway. That would be a major change in grading, if we had to move the driveway. Okay?
Is the driveway where it is right now?
Yes, and it will stay. And, um, so the, the biggest risk, um, that we have is if they require some difference in the, the routing of the sewer coming out of the building when they do the sewer line. The biggest part of the grading is going to be the parking lot, which I don't see any changes done to that. They can do the, the cut, they can add the gravel, they can repair it for a subbase, and quite frankly, you wanna do that to begin with, because all the deliveries, all the truck traffic on it helps compact the parking lot that much better, gets a better subgrade. The other part would be, um, around the, uh, the building site itself. We can't dig footers till we have a permit, so there won't be any grading on the building site itself until those permits are, are required. So basically, really, the only grading that they can do is possibly some, um, some swales to direct water on the site, clearing the, um, the top soil and vegetation on the site, which would be a, you know, about a two, three-inch cut, just to clear that off, and then begin grading the parking lot itself. So the risk of, of us having to change anything from that stage is.
Not much.
Less than 1%.
Okay.
Um, so my professional.
Let me make a quick, uh, comment for, um, the county commissioner, just so you know, for all of you to know, that if we were able to move forward, we still would not be able to get a permit for water and sewer at this point, because Union County has a freeze right now. They are at, this is per, for them, they are at capacity right now, and that includes the, the stuff that's in the queue already before the, your permits are approved. Now, this is for him, that they said that, looking three, four months down the road, which is what you're looking at, um, it's likely that they have, are looking at some options that will, um, allow us to get an ability to tap in water and sewers.
So, yeah. So, Joe, the, the information that we got last Thursday at our meeting from the assistant county manager, we're in the Six Mile Creek, uh, sewer shed, and there is capacity here. They said there is no problem at this particular site. The ones that you're referring to are other sites, which I.
To our mom creek.
Right. So we're in the Six Mile Creek.
Okay. Appreciate the clarification. I just, I know that's what he said. I just assumed that was where we were tied into. So that's good news, then.
Yeah, yeah.
So just to piggyback off of one comment, um, the DOT, DOT permit has not been officially approved. However, we have not made any changes from the previous middle that was approved last plan, so I just wanted to make sure you understood.
It was approved.
It was approved, yes.
Yeah. And, and, and it's an existing driveway. The pipe is in there. It's adequate. There's nothing changed since then, so the likelihood of them disapproving it at this point is almost none.
The, the only change that may have resulted, and I don't, I don't officially know, Rohit may know, looking at the plans, but the hydraulics, I don't know if the size of the pipe has changed since the previous middle, um, but nothing as far as location has, has changed at all.
Okay.
Oh, what did he, what did Travis say when we were out there that day about that pipe? He touched on that pipe, and I don't recall what he said.
Something about the size of it didn't have the capacity down the river, or down the.
Downstream, but that was, and that was if we added water to the ditch.
Yeah.
From the pipe. So we, that's the reason why we're redirecting that flow back to the creek versus putting it in the ditch. So there shouldn't be any hydraulic issues associated with that driveway pipe.
I know the last correspondence that DOT had with our engineers was around the hydraulics, so there was some commentary made around that, and they've been cleaning that up, so I don't, I don't know the full detail there, but.
And, and quite frankly, the, the driveway itself, if we were to have to change the pipe, there would be no change in cost or effort to dig the pipe up from their grading, because they're gonna drive in there, they're gonna cut the parking lot past that. It's not gonna change the location, so if you have to dig it up, big, put a bigger pipe in, you have to dig it up.
Anyway, okay.
So that's.
I, I'm fine moving forward with it. If it's, like, not like a big deal, then I say, let's start, so we can start, and as soon as we get permits, we're ready to go.
Yeah. I mean, that, from my professional opinion, that, that's what I would recommend.
I'm all for it, because you also have good weather.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, weather's gonna impact this thing somewhere down the road, and I'd rather get on top of it now and get going, so that's my decision.
I have a, I have just a couple of things to say, that, you know, one is that when, you know, Marvin Gardens Residential has kinda this same issue, they get their grading permit, this is what I told them, too, so it's good that it applies to us, which is that, you know, if you have your grading permit, you can start grading, and then when you're, you get your, your public works permit, and you can start doing that. Like, that's, it's at your own risk, but it's a thing that you can do.
No, the difference with that is they had a permit from DEQ, because they had more than an acre of disturbance, so they had it, but it was really, it was really his call to say, you can do it at your own risk. You've done that with a couple of different things, um, residential developments, too, I believe. But it was really, it was really his call to say you can do it at your own risk. You've done that with a couple of different things, residential developments too, I believe. Bar, Barcroft, Bancroft.
Um, I think Barcroft had their public works. It was, as I recall, it was just Marvin Gardens Residential that their public works was getting held up. But since they had their grading permit, they were able to start grading.
So at the end of the day, the risk amount is unknown at this time because we don't know what could change. But we feel like nothing is going to change and if so, it's gonna be very minimal.
And the other thing I just wanted to clarify, the public works capacity remark, which is very important, that there is sewer capacity issues across the county, but on the screen here, the Six Mile Creek Watershed, which is outlined in red, gets sent to Mecklenburg as part of a contract that Union County has with Mecklenburg County. So. Huh?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Just the sewer.
The poo.
The water is fine. The water is under capacity. It's the sewer that's really at capacity, but every development in the Six Mile Creek Watershed won't have that.
This goes to travel.
That limitation, right.
Good. We send the poo to Charlotte.
So that was, and that's, I guess that's why he said that there wasn't an issue with the capacity.
It won't be an issue for our village hall project and other projects that are happening in Marvin that are in the red line boundary here.
Awesome. Okay. Well, I'm good with it.
Yeah.
So just simply.
Great job on clarifying that, Kim.
Oh, that I'm good with it?
No, that clarifying what, what we're talking about.
Oh, where the poo goes? I'm just checking. Okay, Bob. Okay, so I need a motion to authorize Randolph and Sons to begin grading the village hall site.
So moved.
So moved.
Further discussion?
Aye.
All to favor.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I've got, I've got kind of a hard stop. I gotta to call to get to.
Okay, what time?
Can I dub like now?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
You can call in.
Yeah, let me just call in.
Okay.
Where's the?
This one. All right.
It's here. I'm ready. I'm about to pass it out.
Next up is number six, finalize spring town hall agenda and format and rehearse for the meeting.
Okay, passing out.
Jamie, why don't you get your page in the meeting? You can make like a nose and boogie.
Okay, okay. You got it.
That's yours right there. About yours. Okay.
Everybody's having a good.
All right, just, yeah, can we pull that up for Joe? Um, and Bob, you can look at it on the screen. Yes, Bueller.
You pull up.
The rehearsal board, anybody?
Anybody? Hey, Bob, can you see the, um, the stuff on the screen or?
Are you using the app or you dialing in by phone? Are you using the app or dialing?
Well, well, this, this is, this is the proposed agenda for the town hall. So you guys need to look at it.
You said that in email.
Austin, are you able to send it to me via email?
We're pulling it up so you can look at it on the screen.
All right. Oh, okay. I thought they couldn't get to it.
No, we're working. Oh, wait.
Real fast, while y'all are working on that, can I just get one clarification point on the village hall stuff? Are y'all okay with them mobilizing materials?
Yes.
Everyone is okay with that?
Jamie, say yes.
Yes.
What kind of materials?
You don't get a vote, so it doesn't matter.
I'm, I'm curious because some, some materials have gone up 250%. I don't wanna be leaving stuff, but I, you know, basic materials as far as gravel and stuff like that.
Well, I mean, Joe, since you're not here in the building, then we're gonna volunteer you to go out and stand guard at night.
This is the meeting, this is the meeting though.
I, I really don't know what kind of materials. They just need to start mobilizing. I would assume wood shingles or whatever.
Probably masonry for foundation work and stuff that they're gonna wanna start gravel. Yeah, thank you.
But yes, okay.
Yeah. We're not to the expensive stuff yet.
Okay. Joe, can you see the agenda, the proposed agenda online? Bob, can you see it?
Yes, I, I have it on my phone, but I can't see it. I'm not in front of the screen. I'm, I'm driving.
Oh.
And just, just to be clear, um, welcome for me in introduction to my introduction, just obviously council.
Yep.
Are you?
Do we want to go into other board members?
No.
Staff?
Yes. I'm like, why do I hear myself over there?
Okay.
All right, bye. Jamie's just remote now, so that's fine, right?
We need to make a motion to allow him to participate remotely.
I, I think it's safe just because we now don't have a council, a quorum in the room.
Yeah, just go ahead and make, just go ahead and make that motion.
All right, so I need a motion to allow Jamie to participate remotely.
So moved.
All's in favor? Aye.
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 Okay. That motion passes. Okay. All right, Joe, so you've got welcome, and I would say introduce council and staff.
Okay.
All right, accomplishments with photos, like at retreats. So Christina, is that you?
What photos are you guys referring to by the way? Cause I don't have photos.
The ones that were in the PowerPoint at the retreat.
Okay, we'll need.
Most of them were Derek's.
Oh, okay. We'll have to figure that out.
I'm assuming there'll be some pictures of village hall and progress on that.
Well, that's on other to, that's other topics on here.
Okay, so there won't be, it'll be moved to that part of it?
Probably the next one, village hall update and groundbreaking ceremony recap. Christina, that's you. So we need to mark out village council and put Christina there? Cause those are accomplishments. You're gonna go over that.
So Christina's doing the accomplishments?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, uh, roundabout update. Rohit, that's you?
Yeah, I have an update on it, but you want me to give it then?
No, give it to us now.
Okay, well.
I mean, give it to us then too.
It's in the, it's in the meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I just got out of the TCC call from this morning and at staff level, they've approved our roundabout for shortfall funding of $396,000. Um, and the CRTPO board will be voting on it in June.
I don't know what that means.
That was some of the funding that we were anticipating. The last revision that we had, we knew there was gonna be a shortfall and we had, when I think they call it CMAC funding.
Uh, I don't know where the money's coming from, but CRTPO is getting it to us if the board votes on it.
Okay, cool. We've already planned on getting this money, so it's not actual additional money.
Oh, okay. But, but you did get, you did get some additional money.
I did, yes. $50,000 as of last night.
So you can update us that. Okay. So I would say, do we only have funding update or do we have date update?
I don't have a date update.
I've got some date stuff.
You've got dates up. Does that include Matt Eisman?
Right away?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, cool. All right. So that's gonna be Rohit slash Christina?
Yeah.
Okay.
Great.
Great. Fantastic. All right, Loop Greenway map, interactive trail map. That's you Rohit?
I had a question about this. Do you guys want to just move this down into the website section? And then you can do, you can give, make this an update on the grant for the loop?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be great on a technical perspective because I would love to actually pull up the website and be able to show the map.
Yep, that's a good idea.
Cause when we get to the website section, I, I was imagining Rohit doing like a wall, like a demo essentially.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna move that down there to website. Okay. Uh, disc golf, that's Derek. Recap of 424 cleanup, that's Derek. It didn't happen.
So just scratch it off?
I would just take it off, cause it didn't happen.
It sorta did. There were.
Very small scale.
Small turnout, um, but.
It was like three or four people.
It did happen, I would say.
I'm not sure I would call it an event. I'm gonna call a couple of people. Okay, you know what? Leave it on there and say, we tried to have one. So can somebody have this conversation with Derek? Like we tried to have one.
It got rained out, so I mean.
It did rain, but some people.
I can do that date future, I think it's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I wasn't saying that we should or should not have it as an event. I'm just saying, you know, the people came, so.
Couple people came.
All right, 2020 Marvin Day Celebration. That's gonna be Derek and Jamie. Jamie?
I guessed that up.
Yeah, Jamie, are you gonna be prepared to talk about that? I'm glad you saw the list.
I know Jamie was good at explaining the rationale of why you'd wanna have this sort of thing. So that's why I put his name down there. And then with Derek following it with the PRG's preparation.
He can leave that. We can tell him.
It's Jamie.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, we know that he can hear us.
Yeah.
Okay.
He might just be muted.
He's muted, okay.
All right. Jamie, whenever you unmute yourself, just let us know if you can talk about the 2020 Marvin Day Celebration. Okay, cool. Uh, Marvin Heritage District update. That's Rohit.
Yep.
Okay. Christine, you've got solid waste services update.
Mm-hmm.
Um, annexation.
We really don't know if we have anything for this.
Update.
I mean, we're putting the three annexations that we got into the.
We're annexing three parcels.
I don't, I feel like that's weak and maybe we, instead of saying that we, instead of saying how many we've gotten, say that we have gotten some requests for annexation.
You're gonna make this like a marketing thing essentially?
Yes. So let's talk about why and, you know, if you've got friends or if you happen to not be in Marvin, but you're here, you're listening, you know. We'd love to have.
I mean, it might be like a.
Sales pitch.
Yeah.
All of us kinda thing, that's me, but yeah, that sounds good.
Okay. Uh, new council seat.
You skipped the website?
Oh, shoot. Website.
I've got, I've already, I already got some stuff prepared for this. I've got a list of features that we might can just do a demo on, like oh, this is here, this is here. You can look at upcoming developments on this map. You can find this here. So yeah.
I would do like, um, I, here's what I would highlight is like upcoming like events. So like where can you find like what's happening in the village? What's going on? Where you can find meeting information, so dates, recordings, meeting minutes for all boards.
Those are on my list.
Um, and then like your interactive, like the trail map, um, new development maps, those kinds of things. That's those, that's really what I would highlight. And then maybe like.
I have a longer list and we can demonstrate maybe half of them or something.
Yeah, I wouldn't, cause people are gonna be like, you know, like you gotta, okay, that's good. Uh, new council seat. That'll be village council, us talking about that. Anybody wanna do that? Bueller.
Mayor Pro Kim?
Bueller.
Who's not here?
Jamie just left, so I vote him in.
All right, we'll make Jamie do that too.
Do you want me to put Jamie's name down?
No, cause Jamie's gonna do coffee with council right after that.
I guess, once again, I guessed.
Yeah, that's good.
So do you guys just wanna like jointly talk about the, the new council seat?
Yeah, but we need to know who's gonna start it off.
You start it off. You're, you're good at it.
Mayor Pro Kim.
Public speaking, and we can just kinda fill in.
Okay. Um, shoot, by that point we'll have voted on it moving forward. Okay, that's cool.
Just, yeah, just let people know.
Um, all right, then we've got Jamie doing the budget and the public hearing. So is she gonna walk through? How's she gonna do this Christina?
This'll be.
I can do it, I can do that actually.
Okay. Yeah, let's do.
And this, we'll have this set up like last time where Jamie's in the back with the microphone for questions and everything, so they can tack things if they need to.
Uh, and then general questions. I know that we had said last time, like hold everything to the end and we didn't end up doing that. I think as people have questions, get them addressed when they've got them, like for the topics.
This is also for like topics if we didn't, something we didn't discuss.
Right.
Oh, that, a timeline. Do, do we wanna put some sort of internal timeline agenda like we did last time? That was really helpful.
Then yes, if it was helpful, let's do that.
Yeah, Christina was pretty much the keeper of the clock. She kept things.
Christina will be the main emcee. Can you pay attention?
Yeah.
I'm listening.
For what? She goes to that to me?
She's good at keeping people in line though. She's good.
Yeah, you guys put times on these.
Like as an internal thing, like we do last time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Not, not what everybody sees, but for us.
Right.
Do you guys wanna guess at these?
No, we can do that.
Yeah, we, we can probably do that. Um, but the reason why that, I reminded me of that is because, um, I was, we were able to ask questions when we were ahead of time.
Yeah. I think we just ask questions as people have them. Like if they, if somebody's got a topic on something, then I think we should let them answer that.
I agree. We should put in your internal time slots. I think you should allow for a certain amount of time for questions. Because people tend to.
Think of stuff when you're talking about it.
Right, and then, and then they tend to lose when they're, you know, they forget their questions or whatever after they've listened to 16 other topics.
Yep.
Then they're, at the end, they're like, ah, crap, I forgot what I was gonna ask.
Right, and then the general questions can come, that stuff that's been emailed into Austin or people that are on WebEx or whatever. Can we please turn off the comments? I, I cannot.
Yeah, there'll be no chat.
I mean, that drove me.
Well, how do we, how will we take questions from people who are attending virtually?
They need to unmute themselves and say, I have a question.
Are we guys looking for me?
Nope.
I mean, well, we love you, but we weren't looking for you.
Well, we're talking about you, but we weren't looking for you.
And I'm very sorry for running in here like a crazy person. We had all the bakers on the phone looking very professional and I couldn't.
The bakers? The, they had the tall white hats on, the white jackets?
Bankers!
The bankers. He said the bakers.
The truest people that were gonna be.
Oh, right. Giving us money?
Yeah. All right, so y'all don't, okay.
No, we're good. Thank you. We're gonna have pictures of that. Can we have a interior layout so people can see it of the inside?
We still gotta get, we still gotta get some posters made.
Okay.
Yeah, they were all asking at the groundbreaking, what's the inside look like? What's the outside dimensions of the building? You know?
What color's the carpet?
And, and I asked John Urban and he's like, oh, well.
I don't know, yeah.
I didn't even put, put this together for seven years. You don't know what the dimensions are yet?
He's like, seven years? It's been 12. Okay.
Has it really been 12? Has it really been 12?
Yeah, something like that.
May I, uh, make a recommendation? Or since Roh, I assume we're at general questions right now?
We are, Joe.
Okay. Um, and I don't know how you guys feel about this, but I just thought as far as we maybe add a slot for it, maybe something happens, maybe. But ask, asking the community for input on the future events, uh, either now or going forward. Um, you know, maybe a slot for that, that we get a little dialogue from the community, not for questions, but for recommendations of like, Jamie, at this celebration, is there other events, whether it's a cleanup event that they would like to see happen um, as we move forward or in this year?
Yep, a community, community.
Good idea, Joe.
Community event. Suggestions.
Yes, that's perfect.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Question, um.
And I mean, maybe even, maybe even not have that like as a topic, but as people are walking in, have like a sign. Tell us what you'd like to see in Marvin. Give a couple of ideas and have like a shoebox with paper and people can just write down their ideas and drop them in there.
So just do that instead of a topic?
But not the darned person, which maybe.
Uh, yeah, okay. Then, yeah, then we can have a, under general questions and they can, we can say email. Yeah, I don't know, email to the clerk.
So do we need, do we wanna have a, a box to drop pa, slip the paper in?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, again, it just, there's just a lot to not only talk about, maybe some potentials or for the future, we would be saying, hey, um, provide staff with some ideas if going forward, if you'd like to see it, we can bring it up in a regular meeting.
Okay, how about under number 10, 2022 Marvin Day Celebration, let's have a subtopic and say, send us your ideas of other community events you would like to see to the clerk.
Just put, just put under the subgroup, ideas for future, um, events.
Community events. Okay, that's great, Joe. Um, can we do a trail update? Can we have Derek give a trail update? Like what has been completed, what's coming up? I'm not sure where to put that, cause I feel like.
It might be combined with number eight, trail update and disc golf.
Isn't that at number seven?
No, that's the, that's interactive trail map and we're gonna talk about that under number 14.
I'd say we could merge into four.
Number four, accomplishments?
Yeah.
Okay, so just make sure that we give a trail update, like what, like what we've done this year and then what the next set of trails that are coming.
Question, um, for, I know you guys are talking about having, uh, internals for village hall for people to see. Do you want that on the website too?
Yeah, heck yeah.
Cause I have a lot of village hall stuff that we can put online.
Yeah, it needs to go up.
You've already got it on one.
I, I did, we did.
The, the interior of village hall, should it go online?
We, uh, we had stuff online before and we took it down after the RFP was done. I, I can put together kind of a history on the village hall project page.
That's fine. I think that's good. And then put pictures of the outside and the inside and then have, have the poster board of the outside and the inside. Okay. That's good. Um, anything else we want? Anybody got anything else?
I, I would just, um, ask that, uh, when we do put, however we're marketing this meeting and this is probably more directed to you, Austin, um, that we highlight the thought that this is a conver, a conversation with council. This is not your three minutes. This is a back and forth type dialogue that rarely happens and that's what. This is not your three minutes. This is a back and forth type dialogue that rarely happens and that's what, we're, we're doing these twice a year, whereas in the past, we only hear comments and sometimes they don't even get addressed. Or maybe they're planned to be addressed in the meeting, but this is a, a, an opportunity for dialogue, if we can highlight that, that's just a side note. And then the only other thing I can have for this whole thing is um, given that we are offsite, um, were there any issues with the Zoom call concerns that we are aware of? And what did we learn from that meeting that we can improve if there's anything? And I don't know because that would be more of a staff question.
Minus the theme that James is trying to do.
You know, did you address that?
So a, a couple of things, uh, the way we're marketing this so far online is the very first, uh, one of the very first lines you read is, this is your chance to speak with council in an open public forum. So we can, I can, I can tweak the wording a bit more to emphasize that this is more than just normal public.
Open dialogue, not, it's not, I mean, like this is a conversation, like, I mean, even put back and forth, like, so people truly get it, be black and white, be, be, like this is.
Here's an opportunity to have a conversation with council.
Now it sounds like coffee with council. Yeah, I can, I'll, I'll work on the wording.
A back and forth, the open dialogue.
The other thing, the other thing is from the last, the last meeting, uh, we are going to try to send as much stuff as we can to their tech guy beforehand, so that we're, we don't have any sort of uh, technical difficulties, cause we, we ran into a few small things last time, but we got most of them resolved during the meeting, so.
Good. Good.
Um, can I ask?
Did everyone do your side? So no complaints that our, our mics weren't working for?
Hang on, Bob. Go ahead, Joe.
I was saying there were no complaints of our mics or any logistical type stuff.
Those, those are pretty good.
No, the mics were good. I think everybody could hear us. I think it was when we had like some video and maybe some PowerPoint.
It was Gene, Gene Stowe's video, it was, it didn't go.
The audio didn't come up, but.
Yeah. Okay.
The only complaint that I've had over the last year, which I think has been resolved, was um, citizen comments, them understanding they can participate remotely, which I think we're now putting a disclaimer on our public meeting notice.
We have, yeah, we have those that, that, we have, we have, we have all that information on every, on every vision that goes out.
Jamie, you should be able to talk now.
So people, initially when we first started the whole Zoom meetings, people didn't know that they could participate remotely and actually talk. So they asked for us to put some information on the notices that say you can.
And, and it says that whenever you look in an agenda, not this one, but.
We always ask to, by the way.
When you, when you, when you look at the public comment section on a normal agenda, it literally says virtual option, this is what you need to do.
We never, we didn't, we didn't at some point have that this is what you need to do, it just says virtual option. So we, we've added that, we've taken care of that complaint.
All right, all right, Bob, what's your question?
No, it was, uh, I don't know if, if this is the proper place or time, that since we're talking about this, um, in going forth in the future, you know, through COVID, uh, we've had the opportunity, uh, us in government, the citizens to participate remotely going forward, assuming, and I don't know if we wanna bring it up, but maybe as of June first, if Governor Cooper, you know, releases a state of emergency, to encourage people that they will not be able to participate uh, in the council meetings, like what's happened in the past. Or maybe they need to physically attend future town hall meetings or really how important it is to come to coffee council personally. I don't know if we need to bring this up to set people up for what may be in the future, and I don't even know if it's appropriate, cause June first may not happen, you know?
I.
I'm just throwing it out of thought.
I, I, I think once we have been able to do this virtually, where people can watch it from their houses or cars or whatever, we're gonna have to continue to do it. So I, I, I think it's a moot point.
I was, I was gonna suggest that um, the way the county does it is you can watch their stuff live, but if you wanna give comment, you're physically there. So we could switch to YouTube Live and then our, our meetings are immediately posted whenever we're done with them.
So you can't, yeah, you can't speak. You, there's no muting, unmuting.
Could we, could we cross that path when Governor Cooper decides?
Yeah, let's, let's, yeah, let's, this, this is not part of the thing. All right, Jamie, can you hear us or can you hear us now or you wanna talk?
No, I can hear, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now. So we, we volunteered you for a boatload of stuff, you good?
No, I, I've been screaming, I've been screaming at my phone. I, I said, I don't wanna talk about the council, the open council, I don't wanna take that.
Okay, you and I'll do that then.
Yeah, that's fine.
And, and you're doing Marvin Day?
And coffee with council.
And coffee with council.
Perfect, I love it.
Do you want me to take a picture of our Marvin Day preliminary list so you have it for next week and I'll text it to you?
I think.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay.
Um, Austin, don't you have that typed up already?
Derek, Derek has a Word document.
Yeah, she's, she's got it too, that's good.
So, um, just a, a note, Christina.
I think did not forward it.
Whoever is doing accomplishments and, whoever's doing accomplishments, it's some, some point, maybe an update on, I heard someone mention Gene Stowe without going into it, where they're at with it, because that's, that's a little bit of our history. Um, so you, maybe get a, uh, make a, a note to give the latest update on that would be nice.
Well, do we, do we know where we are on that?
Yeah, I got an update emailed from him a couple of weeks ago, so that's probably gonna be the most recent thing.
Okay, so let's throw that, throw that in there somewhere.
Wait, say, say that one more time, what are we?
He's looking for donations for his.
Just add the Gene Stowe.
Gene Stowe.
Yeah, yeah, but he's, he's almost done.
Wait, 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 we're writing what?
I got it, I got it, don't worry about it.
He's almost done. They're gonna premiere at uh, Dowell Theater in Monroe um, in a couple of months. It's all wrapping up and been really good, but he's still looking for donations, cause they're still not done yet.
Yeah.
That's pretty much it.
So we're adding Gene Stowe?
It, no, we're just gonna add a PowerPoint slide. I, I, I'll take care of it.
Okay, that's fine. And I've got the working PowerPoint.
Yeah.
And it's part of our history, just an update on that would be nice.
Jamie, I'm gonna email you this list. I can't get my text to go through.
Okay.
And if you don't get it, let me know. Okay, all right, anybody got anything else for um, that, okay, so it starts at six thirty, what time should we all be there? Six o'clock?
Five, staff's gonna be there five thirty. That's what we did last year. That's what we did last year.
Need any help with anything, Austin?
Um. Yeah, you guys can do six, yeah.
Okay, so we'll be there at six o'clock?
I think, I mean.
Bob, are you participating remotely or are you gonna be there?
We, we, the staff has their time to set up everything.
What?
I'll be participating remotely, like I did last time.
Okay. All righty, um, and we are, we've got, okay, so anything else for that? Six thirty, we'll be there at six, with bells on.
And this, okay.